Are we all in? Nope, still a few coming. Hi, everybody. Okay. Good evening, everybody from Village Hall. Glad to see such a big turnout tonight. It's excellent. Talk a little bit about the structure of the meeting tonight. We'll begin with Parks and DEC making a presentation on what's happening at Dockside. And under the first item, opportunity to request addition of agenda items, I'm going to request a modification that we shift public comment up until after Parks, so that the public doesn't have to sit through business they don't want to sit through. Once we have public comment and Parks has addressed questions, we do have a couple of business items on the agenda, a resolution to pass, hiring to do, and some other personnel issues that are part of public record. Okay, so is everyone okay with moving public comment up on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we have tweets in audio this evening, not video.
Yeah.
If you need to pipe in, why just pipe in? So, welcome to Linda Cooper, who is the Teconic Regional Director for New York State Parks. She's going to introduce her team. Linda was here on site today in the Village, did a walk-through at Dockside to check on progress, and she's gonna take us through the project.
Thanks, Mayor Foley. And just to thank you, Mayor, and the Board of Trustees, and to Village Clerk Vidakovic for working with us to help make this presentation this evening and enable us to share information to the public on the exciting project at Dockside. What I'd like to do in terms of an order is I'm going to introduce our team, and then we're going to go to a shortened video that explains why we care about the shoreline, and then we'll come back and talk about the science of the project and then about the construction project and take any questions. That doesn't really take a lot of time. I just wanted you to know what order we're contemplating. The team that we have with us this evening, and that's really working on this project, includes Dan Miller. Dan works with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation as a restoration coordinator as part of the Hudson River Estuary. He's working up at Norrie Point, which is the campus that my office is on as well, in Stabsburg, in Dutchess County. And it is, he works in close contact with the Hudson River Estuary and Research Reserve. So, Dan, you're gonna see him in the video, in the video clip, and then he'll pick up, Dan, I think, right after the video clip. Just pick up and start from there. We also have with us John Blair. John Blair is a senior engineer within New York State Parks, and he's responsible for projects all over both the Palisades, Saratoga, and Teconic regions. Our Teconic region that I oversee is Westchester, Putnam, Duchess, and Columbia County, parks and historic sites, and trails, and things that are within that State Parks catchment area for that. And then John will talk a little bit about the construction and the project, because he's the project manager from Parkside of this collaborative capital project. And then the fourth member of our team this evening is Evan Thompson, known probably to most of you, since he's a Cold Spring resident. And Evan is the park manager for a park conglomerate that includes Wonder Lake over toward the eastern side of the county, Bonstock, and of course Hudson Highlands State Park Preserve. So, Evans, all of us will be able to answer questions. He will not be presenting per se, but will be around to answer questions and is on the call. So with that, I've actually turned it over to Jeff to see if he can queue up the video. The eight-minute video.
The Hudson River shorelines, it's where we interact with the river itself. It's where we go to fish, it's where we go to recreate, it's where our industry takes place.
We need to have shorelines that can be adaptable to not only changing sea levels, but changing flooding and storm patterns. While we might technically be able to engineer a way out of things like climate change, we definitely can't afford to. We're starting to understand that there are different ways to protect our shorelines. We call them natural and nature-based features, or sustainable shoreline.
My name is Dan Miller. I'm the Habitat Restoration Coordinator for the Hudson River Estuary Program. So, what you're looking at over there is typical rocky shoreline of at least the central region of the Hudson. Steep slopes, bedrock, that comes right up from the shoreline. We're fairly close to the edge right now, and we're still in over 30 feet of water. So, it's an indication of how steep it is underwater. There's a great diversity of shorelines in the Hudson, natural shorelines and man-made shorelines. Each have their own contributions to not only the way we live and interact with the river, but also to the health of the river itself. The message, I think, that's really important, is that all of these shorelines have the role.
While we may not be getting all of the sound, I think it's still worth watching and getting the captions and understanding where the shoreline goes. I think it's hard to translate video clips into Zoom meetings.
At State Landscape Archive here. New York City has a real wide diversity of shorelines, but all of our shorelines are constructed. We have a history of about 150 years of modifying our shorelines in order to facilitate shipping and construction and other commercial ventures. Companies like Scape are replicating nature to create new forms of shorelines. These sustainable shorelines can be more affordable to construct and maintain, and more adaptable over the long term. What happens when you build a bulkhead is you turn what should be a wide, near tidal environment into thin lines. So, we're always looking for ways to open that up. Where hard shorelines, like seawalls and bulkheads, crack and deteriorate over time, natural features can actually become stronger as root systems become established. So now, we're starting to look to nature and green solutions. It turns out that plants are actually the real epitome of resilience. All around the world, people are rethinking shorelines and testing innovative solutions that use nature to help us adapt to climate risks. The Living Breakwaters Project proposes building a system of breakwaters offshore. We hope that they will mimic the oyster reefs that once really covered that shoreline, not only as coastal protection infrastructure, but also to create habitat.
This shoreline itself is a location that is owned by one of the nonprofits in the valley, Sina Hudson, and they have a soft shoreline, sustainable shoreline. A house was removed, a bulkhead was removed, and they put in a sloping, vegetated shoreline, which has been very stable through a number of the large storm events that we've had.
In addition to reducing risk, sustainable shorelines provide many co-benefits, like cleaning our air and water, dequering carbon, and providing habitat.
Shorelines are dynamic places. They play an enormous role in the health of the river, and then by extension, you know, our own health.
The future for sustainable shorelines is very exciting. I think that there will be new types of shorelines and new ways that we live with the coast, because there has to be. Climate Smart Communities is a certification program that provides guidance and funding support for local municipalities. Using natural, sustainable shoreline protection is just one action that communities can take to adapt to climate change.
Thank you so much, Jeff, for getting that up and in view. I think I was worried I wasn't going to be able to get it at all. So, I really appreciate that you were able to make that happen as well as it could.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody else could hear it. I mean, on my end, it was fine, but based on your comments, like, uh-oh.
I heard it, the, some of the, some of the sound went out for part of it. I don't know if that was true from everybody. But in any event, we have a star of that video is our next speaker. That's Dan Miller, who you all got to see what he looks like in there. And maybe, Dan, you could talk a little bit about why Dockside was picked to be one of the sustainable shoreline projects and how that came to be, and the science behind what's coming in.
Okay, can anyone hear me? Give me a thumbs up.
Yep.
Okay, great. I guess it's up to me to fill in a couple of those gaps here, because it was cutting out on me a little bit. So, I'd like to start with just a little bit of the, well, first of all, you know, Dockside, I've worked on the Hudson from, since about 1990. And I worked on it from Tappan Zee all the way to Troy. And the Dockside location is an absolute jewel. I mean, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find anyone who could argue with that. It's one of the most, you know, beautiful and really, you know, amazing spots on the river. And I think you folks in Cold Spring and everyone in New York State is really lucky to have that. A little bit of history about sustainable shorelines and the demonstration projects that I manage. Back in the early 2000s, at the estuary program and in the reserve, we started to really think about climate change and sea level rise and how it's going to affect the ecology of the river. And one of the things that we were most concerned about is how we would manage shorelines as sea level rise happened and we had greater storms. How would we defend ourselves in a way that was not going to do further harm to the river, which has already suffered, you know, quite a bit because of some of the things that we've done throughout history? And, you know, so we were, how are we gonna do that? We were trying to come up with ways where how we could build in this resilience to large storms and rising sea levels that not only took into account the river's ecology and the river's health, but also how people use the river. Because most of the places where we're gonna look, where erosion may be happening or damage could occur, are places where people have a vested interest in that shoreline. So, you know, if we're not looking at shorelines that are, you know, undeveloped or anything, we're looking at shorelines where people are really, have a lot of concern about them. So, we developed some science. We were looking at the way physical forces impact shorelines. We're looking at why certain shorelines erode and certain ones don't. And about the same time, around 2008, we had the stimulus package with the Obama administration. And one of the things that they really wanted, and you might remember this catchphrase, was shovel-ready projects, right? And everybody, there's a lot of money out there. If you had a project that was fully designed and permitted. Well, unfortunately, we didn't have those, because it takes a bit of investment to get to that point. So, the estuary program saw an opportunity to try to fill that gap with some seed money to identify individual locations and bring along that design process so that property owners and communities could have that, a supported project that would be ready to move on to the permit and design and construction phase. So, that's what these demonstration projects that I was managing back in 2014 were meant to do. Now, now onto the science just a bit. The number-one goal of these projects is to protect the property, right? So, we came to Dockside and spoke with a number of people responsible for managing it, and we looked at the shoreline, and it's actively eroding. There, you'll see pictures later on of the shoreline. I'm sure all of you are familiar with it, who have been there. That piece of property is mostly filled. It is highly erodible, and the river is continuously trying to take that space back. And so, it takes some active management to stabilize and preserve that land so that the people in New York State and the people of Cold Spring can use that park the way that they want to. Doing that, though, in an ecological way. So, in the video, you saw a number of different types of shoreline treatments. Some were very different from what's being done at Dockside, but it basically comes down to you do as much engineering as necessary to keep it stable and protect the property, but you also try to incorporate principles or elements that support all the things that happen there that you enjoy when you're there. So, habitat for birds, intertidal habitat for fish, or whatever critters might be using that, because, you know, it's our responsibility to, you know, be good stewards of the river while we are managing these properties. All the while, recognizing that this is a place of high intensity public use. This is a public park where people love to come down and look at the mountains and see the river and come in contact with the river. So, that is as much a priority for us as anything else. So, through a number of public meetings and also a review of existing documents when we were in the early design phase, including the local waterfront revitalization strategy at that time. I think that's what it was at that time. It hadn't been completely adopted, but we had met with folks who were working on that. And also Parks' master plan for the park. So, we, those were documents that we needed to be consistent with. In addition to that, we, we had a couple of public meetings where we just wanted to hear from the community how you use that shoreline and what people like about that shoreline, so we'd be sure that whatever design we came up with was consistent with that. I would like to emphasize that during all of those discussions, you know, there was a lot of talk about the park itself and the use of the park itself. And, you know, we, our response to that was that, you know, the park is, we're getting information about how the park is used, and that's what we want to preserve by preserving the shoreline, right? So, it really wasn't so much about a plan for the park as it was really focused on the shoreline itself. So, however, you know, people wanted to discuss the use of that park, that discussion itself could be preserved along with the park. So, I think that's about it. I don't want to take up too much time, and I'll pass it on to John, and of course, be available for any discussion or questions as we move on.
All right, very well said. So, basically, like Dan said, DEC provided parks, were pretty much the design, and then we took it and put it into the construction phase. So, the project's construction actually started September 30th. And the construction end date, hello? I just said something. It will be September 25th. But as you probably saw, the contractor did provide us with their estimated schedule. It's really their goal. Before they started construction, that they're gonna try to finish up come springtime. The only thing is, there's only two planting windows. One's in April to June, others in September to October. So, if they don't get everything done this June, this spring, we're gonna have to wait and complete the project in the fall. So, I don't know if you've been down there, but they have been working pretty hard. Unfortunately, you know, we've been having some cold spells, so they had to take time off, but they, so as you see so far, they mobilized. They got the trailers down there, they put in self-fencing.
Wait, may I interrupt for a second? Jeff, can you put up the presentation?
All right, so I guess we can flip through this. Do I have control of it? Well, the first slide is just showing the location. And you kind of see in red is the outline of the park and the little easement areas in blue. So, the kind of translucent area, that's pretty much, you know, approximately the project limits for this. You know, right now, they have their equipment staged in different areas, but the actual work is pretty much within that translucent area. Can you go to the next slide? So, here is just mentioning, you know, the park is owned by State Parks, our partners. You know, this is DEC, that's the group Dan actually works for, Herner. It was designed by Malone and McBroom, but now they actually called, they were bought out by SLR, and that's who's actually the firm now. And then Dan provided us a website. You know, that's a DEC website, so you can get a lot more information about sustainable shorelines at that link. If you want to go to the next slide. So, pretty much the project overview. So, in the pictures, we're gonna see, you know, the shoreline was eroding, like Dan was saying, you know, you had invasive species. We had old wood piles, concrete debris, you know. The boat ramp, that was in bad repair. And then, so pretty much, the goal is to create a sustainable shoreline. And Dan did a good job describing all that. So, now we're coming to construction. That's my phase. So, Coil Industries has been down there. I know some of you have talked to them. They're very nice, and they are doing a great job. So, like I said, the contract started on the 30th, and the completion date is September 25th. So, here's the pictures of the existing conditions. You could see, most of this stuff, they already did their demo. So, like, all the concrete, they already removed. Some of the wood that washes up on shore, that's been collected and will be put back into the design. You know, stuff like that's been removed. A lot of the vegetation, well, most of the vegetation's been removed. So, now, can you go to the next slide, please? So, now, well, actually, where they are now, they're actually starting to do the work now that everything's been, you know, demoed and the removals. Now, last week, when it was warmer out, well, you see, they have the turbidity curtain out in the river. So, now, they're actually starting to excavate trenches and put the first row of rock, which is called, I forgot what the rock was called. Dan, what's the approach? Oh, the toe treatment. So, they're starting with that. It's a little slow now, because they have to do the work in the dry, so they have to wait for low tide. And as you say, it got warm, but now it's iced over again. So, they didn't do much this week, but, you know, so they gotta work. You know, it's tough. They gotta work in the hard weather and then also in low tide. And part of this will be fixing up the boat ramp. It's just before kayaks. It's basically, you know, concrete pavers that gets set in, you know, along the shore bottom. Let's see, next slide? And this is just, it's hard to see, but I see at the plants on the website. This is kind of just showing an overview of what it looks like. So, you'll have a trail which, I believe it is gonna be ADA Trail. And it kind of just points out the different types of plantings. It's hard to see in here, but you see the different rings of the different types of stone. We'll see it better in the illustrations down below. Next slide? So, here, you kind of see, I mean, Dan could explain it better, but what I'm saying, what they've started putting in is that first ring of stone out in the, you know, it'd be, in low tide, you'll see it, in high tide, it'd be underwater. It's, and then hopefully, you know, there's a lot of work, so they think they'll have it done by springtime. But you see, a lot of, you know, boulders that need to be installed and a lot of plantings.
May I interrupt for a second, John? Dan, can you just explain why this method was chosen for this location?
Sure. Well, in fact, there's variations of this along the entire shoreline, because we try to stay away from a one-size-fits-all type of philosophy, knowing that, you know, diversity of shoreline, just diversity, like diversity of nature is a really good thing. So, energy regimes and the direction of the shoreline and such all change along that length. So, it lent itself to slight variations in the, in the, in the design. But the principal factor here is this, that you see this slope here. And you can see on that, on that graphic, we projected out sea level rise with this. So, the idea is, is as sea level rises, so too the habitats along with that rising water. The different habitat types within the Hudson Estuary are very sensitive to indation and how high they are relative to the water. So, you've got, you know, certain plants that need to be submerged all the time. You've got some plants that are just submerged occasionally. And all those communities have to move along a sloping shoreline as sea level rises. If you have something vertical, that gets squeezed out. And as sea level rises, you lose those habitats entirely. So, that's part of the ecological resilience in this design, is the resilience of the habitats as sea level rises.
Thanks, Dan. Next slide.
Thank you very much, Dan. And just so everybody knows, I know they got the drawings on their website, and you could see that they have sections, profiles. So, you'll see all the variations that Dan just explained. Thanks, Dan.
So, this is the end result. Maybe actually, John, let me go back to Dan. Want to explain again how this works when it's finished?
Sure. And I would like to just say that this is sort of like a paraphrasing of what it looks like, you know? And this is what an artist's rendition of that. I don't think you're gonna see nearly as much large rock like that. A lot of the rocks that you saw in the earlier design portion of it were buried and set in. So, you'll see, I think, much more of a plant material than you would rock material along with this. But it's basically a terrace system that go higher in elevation as you move in from the shore itself. The plants are all native species that attract, whether it's butterflies or insects or wildlife and birds and such. And then, of course, there's that path that is put in along that, that'll have some interpretive materials about either the river or the shoreline project yourself, or some of the things that you're seeing. So, this kind of is what it looks like, but it's not, I wouldn't call that an exact representation. It's an artist's rendition.
Great, thanks. And then, John, just, can you just wrap up? So, the way the construction project will move forward and then how that interfaces with people's use in the park? Because this is the last slide, as I recall.
Yeah, this is the last slide. So, basically, they got their fencing they put up, and there are areas, you know, the public can use within the orange fencing. Just beware, some of their fencing goes to weather, the high winds, it got ripped apart. So, some of the public have been going into where they shouldn't be, but they're not working in that area, so not really a safety issue right now. But they'll be restoring that. So, there is ways to use the park and have the contractor do their work. So far, I don't think there's been any problems. I've been talking with the contractors, you know, they've been answering questions, but I think everything's been going smooth so far. So, as it goes along, you know, those orange fencing might, you know, be changed here and there. You know, depending on what section they're working on. So, that turbidity curtain I was talking about, that's gonna move down as, you know, as they're doing the work. Right now, they're on the north end. So, hopefully, things will warm up and they'll really start moving along. As you see, they also started bringing in stone, you know. So, pretty much, that's it. They got an aggressive schedule, and it seems like they're really trying to stick with it, though.
Great. That's really the end of this presentation, Mayor Foley. I don't know how you wanted to do questions, whether you wanted to recognize people yourself or have them, put them in a chat or in writing. But we turn the floor back to you and happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Sure.
Well, we'll start with questions from the Board of Trustees, and then move to, to public question and comment. Do trustees have questions they'd like to ask at this point? Dan, you go, Eliza?
Yeah, I looked through the presentation, and I really liked the design work that you guys did, and the use of indigenous plantings. And I, there was one question I had about, you know, I know you mentioned the AVA pathway, but I think it was gravel. So just wondering if you can give more detail about what the material is.
Yeah, well, the material is gravel, but it's, it's going to be done to this back, so it's going to be a hard surface, and it'll meet the trail ADA spec. And the scope and cross-scope will meet it also.
Just one question, Kathleen?
Go ahead, John.
First off, thank you for the presentation. It was informative. Just a quick question. When you're done and complete with everything, and then, I believe, becomes the village's responsibility with maintenance, what do you anticipate as far as ongoing maintenance needs with the project specifically, as you're going to leave it?
Let me start, and then I'm going to turn it to Dan a little bit. The, the maintenance that we refer to is really the regular maintenance that the village is doing under its agreement with the park. The mowing, the taking care of the grass and everything. The, the maintenance of whatever kind of weeding in my discussions with Dan Miller, and I'll let him fill this in. We are envisioning more as volunteers coming together in more of an I Love My Park Day setting, where they might be able to, under, under the instruction of staff from the Hudson River Estuary Reserve, or the Hudson River Estuary, be able to help with whatever simple kinds of work we may need, if you need to pull weeds or do anything else. And Dan, correct me if I've misspoken, or talk about how you envision. So the maintenance that was referred to in the beginning is the regular maintenance of the park itself, as Dockside Park, not necessarily the maintenance of the, we have just a small amount of weeding, I think, periodically, to be done on the, on the, on the rocks. But Dan, could you speak to this?
Sure. You know, we're going to be, as a demonstration project, we're going to be monitoring it. So we've got a monitoring protocol that is going to go out and assess the, the site seasonally, just to see how it's holding up. But also after major storm events, you know? We're really interested in that. And through that monitoring, we'll identify any maintenance needs. The goal of the project is that maintenance of the shoreline itself, you know, shouldn't be anything more than, you know, we kind of have a standard that we call the wheelbarrow standard. You know, like, you know, that's, that's pretty minimal, doesn't require permit, or anything like that, to do any major work. And, and, you know, that may happen on occasion, and, and, you know, we're going to, we're going to take that on. And the goal is that that would be absolutely minimal. It wouldn't be minimal. It wouldn't be a, a big deal. As far as the invasive species that may come in, or maintaining the plants and such, you know, Linda hit it right, that, you know, we were going to be going out there and hopefully organizing groups of volunteers, hopefully people from the village of Cold Spring, to help, to help take care of it, identify native plants that may be sprouting, and pulling them out on a seasonal or, or annual basis.
So Dan, you envision teaching local folks, maybe a Friends of Dockside group, or something like this that might emerge?
That would be great, yeah. Sorry, I really do envision that. That would be a fantastic thing. I, I would request, and probably this would be part of that, you know, that any actual maintenance would happen under supervision of parks or DEC staff, just so we can make sure that, you know, people are making the right decisions in terms of what plants to pull or not.
That was my next question, is how Evan Thompson, what role Evan Thompson, I mean, we see Evan do this all the time at Little Stony Point, work with scouts and community groups to clean up and maintain the shoreline there. How, how will Evan engage with Dockside?
Evan, I can let you answer that. And, and he's not coached in this answer, so we'll see what he says.
Well, we'll do whatever is needed to be done. And we'll work with DEC, we'll work with the village. Our staff is very interested in, you know, native plantings, eliminating the basives. And so we'll, we'll be out there checking it out all the time, and making sure nothing's getting out of control. And if it, if it is, we'll contact Dan, and we'll get a group together, and we'll take care of it. So I wouldn't be concerned about that.
Evan, I've never had a view into how you interact with our highway department, the, the team in the village that's charged with dealing with grass, et cetera, installing benches. How, how do you and they interact?
So since the agreement that the village has taken over the maintenance, we haven't really interacted in the past. We, in, in the very far past, we used to mow it, and it meant bringing a mower down there, which is kind of out of our wheelhouse and mowing. It seemed to be more, make more sense for the village to take care of it. And so we kind of made a deal that, that the Film Society wouldn't have to pay for any, any permits or anything, or whatever the village wanted to do down there, you know, we would let them do it in exchange for the village maintaining the property. And then that was kind of formalized into the agreement that we made a few years back.
In 2018. So, so it sounds like that's a team of people who need to have direct interaction and training with you as well.
Right. I mean, I think they know how, they know how to cut the grass.
Well, yes. But I mean, in terms of when they're getting along the edges, right? Knowing what they're looking at, if we...
Right, right. I think that would be important, that, you know, when the project is done, I think we should all get together and look at it, and especially under Dan's supervision, you know, figure out what needs to be done, what, what shouldn't be done. And, and I think, you know, we'd be happy to help make that happen.
Are there any questions from other trustees? Catherine has a question.
I remember the original demonstration many years ago, when they brought the, the plan out. And I'm not sure if I remember correctly about the boat launch area. And is there going to be any place for whatever kind of boat we can launch from there, to be stored there?
We have not anticipated any kind of boat storage at, at the moment, and, or any parking. It's really just, the boat launch was in existence, and as a result of the public meetings, it was a request from the, many of the residents that were at those meetings in 2014, I think, 14? I think it was, that, that the, that the boat launch remained. And interestingly enough, Dan was looking at a list of meetings. And it's like, the first, the first meetings that he had record of were when Sean Gallagher was mayor, 2012.
2012, that's some time ago, yeah.
So, but that's really was a, just, that was a very simple boat launch in the past, remain a simple boat launch. That's not to say that the village couldn't do something in terms of boat storage, but it's not in our scope or anticipated.
So as it's designed right now, it's just a carry-in, kind of carry-out.
Correct.
Okay, thanks very much.
Anything from you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. That was a great presentation. Thank you. That helped really clarify the work that's being done. And I do agree with trustee Starbuck. I like the attention to native species planting, and kind of getting back to what it was versus what it is now. So that, this is great. I do think there's probably a lot more conversation about Friends of Mayor's Park and maintenance in the future. And so, you know, I look forward to those conversations as well. But I think this is a great, a great start, and I'm glad you guys are here to present to the village tonight.
Friends of Dockside, we'll make sure we're, we're clear.
Yes.
Okay. So Jeff, oh, that's Tree Advisory Board. So we'll turn it over to public question and comment now. And if trustees have questions again at the end, we can do that. Jeff, are you, I can't see all of the folks on the screen. Are you able to moderate? Hands up.
I'm going to try. I'm going to ask everybody to please use the raise your hand icon. We have 50 people participating. So I have to scroll between screens to, so if you're actually raising your hand in front of the camera, there is a chance I'll miss you. So trying to get everybody, and we'll start with, I believe it's Jen Swart from the Tree Advisory Board.
Awesome. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, Linda, and thank you, John and Dan, for your presentation. You may recognize my name, because I also am the president of Cold Spring Film Society. I've been emailing back and forth with you. But I am also the chairperson of the Tree Advisory Board in the village. And just wanted to make a comment on the side of maintenance. Again, I think this project is wonderful, and thank you so much for all your work on it. I would like to make the comment that I think improvement could be made in how you communicate with the village. I work closely with the highway department, and I know that there's been some frustration in terms of that communication. And it would just help if it would be better communication. For example, you're planting 27 new trees on the property. You know, most of them are saghorn sumac, which are relatively short trees. But 12 of them are going to be large, mature shade trees. And the existing mostly Norway maples on the property are in need of maintenance. And the village has, because of the maintenance contract, tagged these trees with numbers, and we're trying to budget for their maintenance, and had no idea that we would have 12 more trees, which I am awes, I'm excited about. But it would be helpful if that was communicated to us. And if you have an arborist that you're working with for maintenance, for early pruning of these trees, or if we need to be doing that, we need to tag them and have them in our inventory, and part of our regular maintenance, et cetera. Just those kinds of questions are questions that would be helpfully answered if they would be, you know, collaboratively, collaboratively reached out. And also, the idea of who is ultimately responsible for the property. And if you need people to be supervising what we're doing, it's, it's a big deal in terms of scheduling. When we do our regular maintenance, we don't have very much money. And we have professional arborists do the work for us. But do we need to notify you? Who do we need to notify? Will you be doing pruning in a separate schedule apart from us? Those kinds of questions, I just, we have, and would love to talk with you offline about that at some point. That's all.
Thank you for raising those, Jen. Those are all good points. And I think we'd be happy to take that conversation offline and coordinate with you and the highway department, and, and how we, how we plan to look at the trees, all the trees for their health of the future and their maintenance. So thank you for pointing it out. We'll definitely work on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, you're good to go. Wait, we can't hear you.
Still muted, I think.
How's that? Better?
Pretty good, yeah.
Sorry about that. First, I want to just thank the mayor and the village board for bringing transparency to the project, to the space of the project, letting the sunshine in. Thank you for posting the documents on the village website. And thank you for arranging this presentation and the discussion. I have to just commend you all. You've been really great about bringing the public into the conversation this year. So thank you for that. I had three quick points. I live next to the park, and I just had three quick points. The first one is about the orange fencing. And John already alluded to this. It's been great that, you know, you've been working with the community to allow the public to continue to use the park. The park is not just, it's really a place of community building for us. And so I commend you, and thank you for allowing us to continue to use the park, even as the construction project's going on. That's fantastic. But as John mentioned, the orange fencing is not holding up very well with the strong winds. And we get really strong winds here, really, from December to around April. And it, as soon as it gets put up, it was put up last Monday, and by Wednesday, sadly, it was shredded again. And so I'm just wondering if there's another material that could be used just to ensure the safety of people using the park? So that's the first thing. The second one has to do with access to the boat ramp. And trustee Fatty already brought this up. I'm glad to hear that there won't be parking in the park. We're not, you know, tearing down paradise to build a parking lot. That's fantastic. I'm glad that it's going to be a carry-in, carry-out situation. But I do worry, because even now, often cars will show up at the park, lift the chain, and drive into the park quite regularly in the summer months. And so I do worry that this just creates another sort of temptation for that to happen even more, and that we might get into public safety issues of children running in front of the car, and so on. So I think some thought should be given to how to discourage people using. Even if there's a chain, people sort of going into the park with their cars, just a public safety issue, children, and so on. And then the other issue has to do with the upcoming summer. If you miss the April to June planting season, and we go into the summer, there are hundreds of people who use the park in the, in the weekends. And I wonder how it's going to work out when they all show up and there's construction happening? I imagine they probably will then go to the lawns next to the bench stand. And that's okay. But those are usually already very crowded on summer weekends. And so I'm just, one, you know, encouraging you all to give some thought to how to handle the potential of an overcrowded situation down here. But beyond that, I think it's a wonderful project. I'm really grateful to hear about it, and to be able to participate in the conversation. So again, thanks to the mayor and the board for, for allowing that.
Thanks, Gaston.
Thank you very much for the questions. And just in terms of the, the strong winds, I think that John will probably go back and discuss with the, with Coil Construction. They certainly are not holding up. So we'll see what can be done. I don't know, John, I don't know if you have any ideas off the top of your head that you want to say now, but I think they'll certainly have to take that into consideration. They definitely are all over the place.
I'll definitely speak with them. You know, like I said, where the fence is now, there's no work going on. But I definitely need to speak with them, you know, to come up with something.
Thank you.
In terms of access to the boat ramp, as, as it goes on, I think that there's an opportunity there for the village and Evan to, it's probably similarly with the crowds, to get together and see, you know, what we may need to do. We certainly don't want cars driving in. And if that, if we determine no car should be driving in, then create a bollard system or something to prevent cars from being there. There, there are certainly mechanisms that can be put in, or a more effective fence than a, than a, than a chain. But those are all just things that would need to be discussed and figured out, and, and put in place. And same thing with the summer crowds. Right now, it is a construction site. If, depending on, we, we would, the construction project is going to be the paramount use on that site. If it needs to shut down, it will shut down. If it needs to, if it can direct crowds to a particular area, we'll do so. And we will have to just all work together to see how that works with more people coming in the better weather. And the good news, as they pointed out, both Dan and John pointed out, is that most of the work is really along that edge. So I don't know how much, you know, it depends how spread out the contractor has to be. And as we see that, we'll have a better idea of how, how the space can be shared with public use. Dan, Dan, or John, do you have a thought on that?
No, I think you absolutely right.
Okay, I muted everybody, because I have a feeling we've been bombed here.
Oh, no, I don't have no bomb. Yo, John, if you stop.
I should try answering instead.
Thank you, Dan.
Sorry about that.
All right, John, Blair, you were talking?
What was the question was? What were we talking about? What was the question?
Summer crowds, I believe it was.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, the contract is very good. We'll, it'll definitely work with everybody. But the number one thing is safety for both the contractor and the public. The contractor has to get his work done. I mean, it's big machinery. He's got, you know, stockpiles of large stone that's gonna have to be moved around, so. You know, but that's why so far been willing to work with everybody, but I mean, they have a job to do, and we got a deadline.
So there may come a time where we have to say, nobody can, can go in at that, but we just have to play that by ear as we watch what the work, how the work goes.
I, I agree. That contractor's been fantastic in working with the neighbors. I'm very sort of accommodating, so I hope we can continue that relationship. But thank you.
It's very nice to hear. Thank you.
And I, you know, I'll engage in a little bit of speculation here, but you know, the, the heavy equipment work, the actual install, installation of the tow and the heavy rock is really what they're going to be focused on upfront. If, if what remains is plantings, you know, I, I would anticipate not seeing as much heavy equipment on the site as, as obviously you're seeing now. You wouldn't see piles of rock because they'd be installed. And if there's a, a long period waiting for, say, fall plantings, if we have to go to that, I, I don't imagine, you know, the site being as, as occupied by construction equipment and activity as you do right now.
Could I ask a follow-up question of Lynda? I'm putting you on the spot a bit. The, the bollard, the possibility of bollards or a gate or another vehicle control, entrance control mechanism, is that something that states that the state can help us with?
We would look into it. My budget's as constrained as yours, but we try and figure it out.
I assure you it's not.
We would work with you on it, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Jeff?
Thank you.
We are trying to, Shelley Sams?
Yes. Hi. The Shelley Sams is the computer. I am speaking. This is Sandy Saunders.
Hi, Sandy.
Founding president of Clearwater, and I take great pride in Clearwater, that I think it has done more to bring people to the river. And, and the, and the, the New York State Parks has been very generous to Clearwater, giving grants for maintenance and of developing the Kingston. I look at this project quite compatible with the ongoing maintenance of Clearwater in a major marine railway copied after one of the very best boat, wooden boat builders in the world, Gannon and Benjamin and Martha's Vineyard. When we built Clearwater, we had to go to Maine because there was nobody in the river who could build a wooden boat. We searched everywhere, Staten Island, all to Albany. And there was simply no skills. I believe the Cold Spring would be tremendously benefited by putting in a marine railway and a shop copying Gannon and Benjamin and being available to maintain Clearwater and build the next Clearwater, which would probably be the experiment. If we've lost those skills, they're gone forever, probably. I'm also concerned about public access, not only to the boatyard and the marine railway. I am also concerned about public access to the water. Next to the Cold Spring Dock and Bandstand, Gazebo, they call it now. There was, there were two beautiful sandy beaches where people could launch their small boats, and Larry Mead, in fact, had a seagoing Jeep, which he used to drive down the beach south of the, of the Gazebo. Public access to the river is very important. Growing trees and all is natural. It can easily be done. The boat ramp was there. The very, the dockside has had a very interesting history. A hundred years ago, it was a heavy iron foundry for the General Electric Company. Then it became a swim club and boating and boat service system for the Dulusia family, who that, who had a swimming pool and built what then became the Dockside Restaurant, a very fine restaurant.
Hey, Sandy?
Took so many people.
You know, what, what I'm gonna suggest, I would love to collect this history from you. And I would love to have you come into Village Hall and, and sit, and we record and talk more so that we have this on record for the public. There's, you do have so much in your head.
Well, I think that's
Well, so, but for tonight, do you have a question for Lynda Cooper?
I, well, Lynda, how are we going? Well, first of all, Lynda's got a budget to work with. Gannon and Benjamin had a fire and was rebuilt for less than fifty thousand dollars. Millions are going in to the shoreline restoration and possible other construction. I'd like to see the park's money used very creatively and very efficiently. Can we work together? We have drawings created by one of the original builders of Clearwater, Peter Lovell, who is now a significant architect in the Boston area. We have complete plans ready, shovel-ready, as it were. And so I'd love to come into your office very much, and we have, and bring the drawings and bring a budget, and we'll take it from there.
Sandy, I'd enjoy that very much. So I will connect to you after the meeting. And let's have that conversation and loop, loop in Lynda in.
So just a quick, I've seen some of the drawings of the proposals, and the proposals were for large buildings on the shore of, of Dockside Park, and parks determined that that was an inappropriate use of the park, that the scenic value of, of the open space at the park and the trees and the way the park was used was better. It's not to say the idea of putting a boat building school or a, or a deep water birth for such a purpose is great, but that was not the location. And so we have looked at those in the past.
Right.
Well, Lynda, I hope you will see the drawings and see that everything proposed is completely compatible to the natural shoreline to the west and north and the park within, within it. I don't see any plans particularly, once you've restored the shoreline, what are you gonna do with the mountain? It's a wonderful place to camp. Many of my friends go there. So it's, it's a park of many uses, but it could be just a wonderful grace for the village of Cold Spring and the valley and people visiting from all over the world. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sandy. Jeff, are there other hands raised? And Jack, Paul's face raising, I think.
Not right now, there aren't.
Jack, I think, Jack, are you trying to make a comment?
I am, because I can't find the raise the hand icon.
Click, if you click, for anybody, if you click on the bottom where it says reactions, one of the options there is to raise your hand.
I was afraid to do that. I see. Okay. I just did it. Thank you. I, I, I think I have to raise some issues. I'm the new chair of the planning board here in Cold Spring, and I will admit to just playing catch-up on a lot of projects and, and plans that have been in the works for a very long time. But in listening to the presentation, number one, I, I think that much of what is being discussed here is post-design phase and design decisions. And that it, I think by any standard would be, the project would be much strengthened if some of those details, so much of the presentation was in the conditional voice. You know, if, if, if many of those details, such as maintenance and liability and all of those issues which have not really been resolved in detail were resolved in detail, and in fact, perhaps should have been resolved in detail for the design decision because it's, it's a big project from a planning perspective, even though there's not a major improvement filling on the land. But as you probably know, Lynda, and, and, and Dan and others, Cold Spring suffers from an extreme shortage of parking. And has, is now working on a plan to try and consolidate and coordinate our parking options, and whether or not the cars drive into the site. Somehow or another, those boats have to be offloaded, and the geography of North Street and, and, and West Street there does not permit much either idling or offloading or any of that. And if this is, as I know, the success of the project depends a magnet for increased use, because I understand the park's responsibility to make the public land available to the public. Nevertheless, a magnet of that kind, oh, for automobiles that have to offload their craft and a pedestrian magnet. I think that some consideration needs to be given to exactly what those demands will make on an already extremely critical overcrowding situation at certain times. And, and, and so I guess my area of concern, one area of concern, has to do with all of those sort of technical issues that, as I say, would have been better, I think, been made more concrete prior to, to design decisions being made. The second area is from a planning perspective, I guess, which is my charge. And that is that I, I understand that public hearings, although I had thought it was only one, but, but public hearings were held in 2014. But you know, I think in the, in the presentation was the phrase that the design was based on what the public had said they wanted how, how they wanted the park to be used. As well as the fact that we have a park, again, just paraphrasing the presentation, that we have a park that is a high intensity park. And I have to question whether, whatever wishes that were expressed in 2014 currently represent the perspective of a very different Cold Spring. Demographically, very different. And in fact, because I am down at that park almost daily, or was almost daily and have been for many years, it is in fact not a high, at this moment, a high intensity, highly intense used park. There are weekend uses, it's true, and at the height of the tourist season, you, you do get picnic parties and the like, but as a park over the course of the year, it is currently not intensely used, but it will be intensely used. These changes, which look beautiful to me, although from what I see on the plans, they do involve the central area of the park as well with the development of paths and, and the like, very much changing what the atmosphere is. You know, that is going to, in fact, bring it's a, you know, they will come if you build it kind of crowd. And and I'm not sure that that, that the thinking at the time when this was developed, and even when the agreement was signed in 2018, where the details of this stabilization program were not yet finalized. In fact, it's very vague in that agreement, whether all of that, that whole thought process can be accurately described as what people want now. And finally, whether or not there is, has been any coordination between what the Fjord Trail is proposing and this project, and whether there's a part to play in Fjord Trail's plans that is being played by this project. So those are the kinds of questions which, again, I, fall to me to ask, independent of the trustees, because the planning board is, and I, by the way, don't know where those questions lead to in terms of action. But I felt for the record that I just needed to share them with you all. So my comments.
So I thank you for those comments and for the, for the caution, the appropriate caution that you stayed on behalf of the village and, and, and the way to look at any, any proposed development. I would suggest that, and Dan can, and there are a couple of different avenues to follow. That back in 2013, I noticed in the notes that they, there were discussions with the planning board, as well as the village board, as well as the local waterfront revitalization group that I was not part of, but Dan Miller and, and some of his, his colleagues were, and he can speak to those. But we did try to gather information from a variety of sources within the village. The boat ramp that was being rehabilitated there is actually an existing boat ramp. It was always there. It grew into disuse. It has sort of fallen apart, but it's just, was just, it was already there, and it was asked to be kept. Should the village not want to encourage its use? That probably is possible as well. I mean, I think that those, those are, you know, parks are dynamic, and they, and they have to work in, for the communities in which they're, they're located. I think we have to wait and see. If you think that there's gonna be too much idling on, on West Street or on any of the streets right around there, you know, we have to deal with them at that, you know, you're not gonna allow a situation to make something worse, at least not intentionally. It may be worse in the short term, but not in the long term, so I, one hopes. So that's what we would work with you. And Evan, as, as park manager of Hudson Highlands, would probably be the one coordinating with you on all of, on all of that. But you have the agreement that was signed, the ten-year agreement, and that is really about, just as Evan talked about, was just sort of the, the flow through for an existing evolution of what, how Dockside was being used, used, and what made the most sense in terms of being able to continue that use and its maintenance. So I think as we approach, as we approach the months after this, I don't know that that rehabilitating a shoreline in and of itself brings more people, allowing a, a small boat ramp that was always there to be slightly better condition brings more people or not, but some of that remains to be seen. The Fjord Trail, some MJ Martin is on the, is on the phone, and I can certainly defer to her. Fjord Trail's projects, this predated any discussion on Fjord Trail. And so it's not related to it, but it has, it has, and there is a nexus between this and Fjord Trail, should Fjord Trail be able to move forward. But the shoreline trail that is in design right now for the Fjord Trail has, I think, a 2027 timeline. So there's plenty of time to determine whether So there's plenty of time to determine whether, you know, how, how that, how that works or doesn't work or how, what happens if, if indeed it is able to flow in through Dockside Park. The, we did do a realignment of, of a path to better adhere to a, a pathway that the Fjord Trail was interested in, but that's, that was just trying to be collaborative. And MJ Martin is on the line. MJ, do you want to add anything to that or question?
I, I think you, you answered the question really great. And hi, Jack.
Hey MJ.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, one thing that I would add is, you know, Fjord Trail is still in the planning and design process, very deeply in the planning and design process right now. As Linda said, any enhancements that might happen at Dockside would be, are, are years away. And so one of the things that's really good about that is that it gives us a lot of time to talk to village residents and village leadership about how Fjord Trail might impact on the village and how we can create some resident relevant amenities and enhancements. So that, you know, rather than being a burden, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a positive for the village. We've already met with, with Mayor Foley and some of the trustees. We're going to be holding a public presentation in March. And we'll be getting out information on that so that we can update everyone on where that project stands. But certainly, the planning that you talked about and the, the discussion and input that you mentioned, Jack, as being so important is really important to us as we, as we build out this project and, and come up with the ultimate design.
Well, thanks, thanks MJ. And thank you to Linda for allowing me to express those concerns. I do think, again, from a planning perspective, the closer, from this point on, that the village, in whatever way it chooses to, can work on the details of the impacts of what's being proposed, the more successful the project is, is, is going to be. Because Cold Spring has changed significantly since two thousand fourteen, two thousand thirteen. And the problems that we're dealing with. And that, and they are, you know, the problems of controlled growth and that's controlled growth of visits and the kind of visits and our infrastructure and, and not wanting to lose what is becoming more and more a scarce living environment where you actually have a working village of people who work here, go to school here, send their kids to school here, and you still have the capacity to share it with others coming in, but that's not an easy formula. And so looping in New York State Parks to help with that formula, I think this is a good time to do. So thank you very much.
We look forward to that collaboration and thank you for thoughtfully presenting some of the issues that we should be a, a, all aware of.
Thanks.
Rebecca Ramirez.
Hi, I will be very brief. Hopefully you can hear me because I keep getting the sign that says connection and stable. But I just wanted to piggyback on a little bit of what Jack was saying. And, you know, I know that the budget has already been planned and if there was any sort of wayfinding systems put into place, that's great, but if that was not put into place, I think that would be a wonderful addition to help influence the moving of traffic into different directions from the main street to, you know, the areas where Hudson River Expedition is, so that people can rent their kayaks to, I don't know, just thinking one of the ways that we can, that you can help influence the moving of traffic into different directions. That would be really wonderful if at any point there is funding for that. And if there is not, I would say I, I would love to work on, on helping to fundraise for something like that because I think that would be.
Right. So municipal wayfinding is not any part of this project, nor something that state parks can pay for, but we can collaborate with you to try and find out where any other pots of funding might be that can help with that kind of a project with the village.
Linda, can you elaborate a little bit? We, we have had some discussion on signs, not way signing, not wayfinding, but interpretive signs that, that are being considered for part of the project. I personally think it's very important that the industrial history of the waterfront be told. Cold Spring was built on a working waterfront and, and built on the back, backs of working people. And it's important to tell their story. So can you talk a little bit about the signage?
Sure, there, there will be signage within the park, so interpretive signage within the park. I believe what Rebecca was talking about was a, a, a unified wayfinding program within the village to help tell people where to park and, and all of that. That, that would be outside of the scope of this, but we're certainly happy to be at the table and see what can happen. But we do hope, I know one of our landscape architects met Mayor Foley in the park and they're trading bits and pieces of information and there are, so there are some interpretive signs that are in design right now.
And also working with the, the, your landscape architect is connected to the History Museum.
Correct.
And the town, town village historian, so that we have that loop in as well.
Yes.
Jeff, are there other hands?
Guest Tom.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to jump a second Rebecca's point. I, I shared Jack's concern about the parking issue, so spillover effect of the, what's being, what's being built. I live right at the corner of North and West, and so therefore, not only do I get to enjoy the park, but I also get to park right next to the park, and it's already hard enough to do that on regular summer days. That said, I also feel that it's a public safety issue to have cars going in and out of the park. But there's a lot of small children who use the park and we don't want to get into that kind of situation. So I'm glad that there's not a parking lot in the park. That just seems wrong. I'm glad that there won't be cars going in and out because I think of the public safety issue. But then that does present the issue of then where would the cars unload the, the kayaks and so on. And yes, at the corner of North and West, there isn't a lot of space to do that. And so I don't think that's, you know, that I think needs to be thought through. And there isn't a lot of free parking down here. Usually, especially in the summer, where we cannot even, you know, you don't move, you don't go out in the summer because if you move your car, you can never return, right? So I like Rebecca's idea of finding ways to direct traffic to other places, including other boat lounges down by the restoration chapel, as well as the boat club, which according to the lease, village residents have access to their boat ramp. So I think there, there was some thinking that needs to be done about how to deal with the spillover effect without compromising the idea of keeping cars out of the park.
We agree with you. Parking is a very big issue, especially with the whole Hudson Highlands State Park Preserve. We are looking at, at working with Hudson Fjord, is sponsoring a, a parking study that should be rolled out sometime in the coming months and identifying where, how we should look at parking in the village. And one of the, one of the recent actions that was able to be achieved was Metro North is, is saying people can park in the train parking lot on the weekends. That in the past, that was not, not allowed unless you were going to the city. So that, you know, we're hoping that's a significant amount of parking pretty close to the downtown. That so that if, if indeed, as Rebecca Ramirez was saying, if you have the, if you have wayfinding that can direct them there and signage that can tell people where available parking is, may be able to accommodate some of that. And so we'll be, we all are working together collaboratively, hopefully with the village and the village parking study, the Fjord Study and State Parks as a partner to evaluate how do we manage people, both those that come on the trains, the ferries, the, their cars, their bicycles and, you know. You're right, people want to visit Cold Spring because it's so lovely. And you're right, that makes it difficult to live in Cold Spring where you moved because it's so lovely. So it's, it's a, it's, it's, has a tension right there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any additional public comment or question?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay.
I'd like to make one more comment and thank you all for your time and your comments and your thoughtfulness. And we, we, we will try to set up some more regular information, you know, and, and be accessible if anybody wants to ask questions or just meet individually. But I want to remind people, the reason that this particular project is there is because without it, Dockside Park might not exist. That the, the sea level rise is coming, is here. And this project hopefully will allow Dockside Park to be a part of the Village of Cold Spring for many years into the future. And that, you know, at the, at the core of this project is, is what can, what can we do against these sudden extreme storms, the rise of the Hudson River and, you know, our changing climate. And, and we really appreciate all of you helping to partner with us to, to allow this park to continue to be a vibrant part of the Hudson River ecosystem. And I don't know if any of the team members want to make another statement to close it out. Dan?
I, I think that says it, you know, and, and I'd like to, to just say, you know, thank you to Parks for being such a great partner to DEC for, you know, helping us, you know, find locations like this where we can do things that I think are really positive for not only the river, but for the surrounding communities.
Okay, well.
Thank you very much.
I think it's really exciting to have a, to have a demonstration project right here in the village for inundation study and, and sustainability. So, thank you. And for, for villagers, we will keep talking about use of the park and we'll keep working with parks together. Thank you for coming very much, Linda and Dan and John and Evan.
And thank you.
Continue on with our
Thank you.
rest of our village business tonight. Have a good night. Uh, okay, so, moving on to garbage, because we can't have a week go by where we don't talk about garbage. Joe, I'm going to turn this portion of the meeting over to you. We are putting a resolution forward this evening for consideration and I'm going to ask Joe to, to summarize for us.
Joe, you muted.
You're muted, yeah.
I think we all were.
Okay, good. So as most know, last week we had a resolution for the garbage. We tabled it as the attorneys were going back and forth on some language issues. That all resolved itself this morning. Some of the challenges that they encountered are with the original bid document. There were certain pieces of it that just weren't overly specific and were subject to interpretation. They interpreted one way, our attorney interpreted it one way and I and others interpreted certain things different ways. They all came together, which I think was for the better. Most of the items were pretty insignificant. I'll do a just quick summary of some things that were clarified since last week. We added a pollution rider at the request of our insurance company that was not in the bid. The bid has a performance bond option and we were given the option of removing it at any point, which would save us twenty-five hundred dollars per year. Our attorney suggested we keep it in at the very least for one year. And at that point, it would be a little less significant just because we have a pretty strong cancellation and forfeiture clause in the event Royal doesn't do what they're supposed to do up to a certain standard. There was some definition questions on this additional two hundred and sixty-one parcels and where that actually came from. That was all clarified after a little back and forth. We added a à la carte bulk pickup provision. So the contract has twelve pickups during the course of the year. They gave us a pricing for additional that we could exercise on two weeks' notice at any point in the year. So if we decide we want to go from twelve to twenty-four, there's a price. If we want to go from twelve to thirteen, there's a price. Probably the bigger issue of confusion, which the lawyer straightened out, was the length of the contract. So there was basically always a provision that it was a three-year agreement. It was a little vague as to what the options of renewal and opt-out were. At the end of the day, it came out to be a three-year agreement with the village option to renew for years four, five and six. The positive to that from our attorney's perspective, which I would agree with, is the value of the bid that we got from Royal was probably half from the second lowest bidder. So we feel that we got a significant value in that. And why not extend that agreement as far as we could with the option of not necessarily having to do that? So at the end of six months prior to the third year, we can basically say, all right, do we want to continue with this? Or do we want to bring it out to rebid? And we could also do some combination of both. So that came through the attorneys as well. Outside of that, everything else was pretty much the same. We did include an addendum of just some corrections, which I had sent out to everybody this morning. And they were basically six or seven just corrections of addresses that were incorrect, et cetera. So that's just a separate addendum, which we don't have to adopt tonight. We can do that next week. Excuse me. And that's kind of a summary. On our website, we updated our Q and A question just to make it a little more up to date from the happenings that have happened over the last couple of weeks. I would suggest that everybody take a look at that. And the next process after this will be what we would call an implementation phase. One of the pluses in dealing with Royal is they've been extremely accommodating to the village. They're currently doing our garbage and recycling under an emergency contract because we don't have a garbage truck. And we're looking to get the contract term started as soon as possible. March first is the actual date of the contract, but they're going to try to work with us sooner. And each week that we're in a contract basis versus an emergency basis is about two thousand dollars per week. So if he can work with us on that, that's just a huge plus. And he just has to go back to the Royal carding executives and see what they can work out at the end. And that's kind of a summary of it. It's been a long process. It's been a fairly detailed process. It's not a perfect process by any stretch of the imagination. But I don't think there probably is one in this type of setting. So I think it's the best case scenario, given the circumstances around us, and it's going to be a learning curve for everybody as we proceed. But I'm pretty confident that at the end, the conversation is going to shift away from garbage and to infrastructure with our highway department, which really is what I think everybody is interested in and excited about. And I think that ultimately is what's going to change the appearance of the village and the functioning of the village, more so than anyone's garbage getting picked up. Because I think Royal will just do an excellent job as they've shown in this emergency situation.
Thank you, Joe.
That's kind of a summary.
Questions from board members, comments?
I just want to thank Joe and I know Tweep was involved and I know Mayor Foley was involved in a lot of the conversations too. But just for the amount of work you guys have put into it, for the kind of detail you're paying attention is enormous. And I, I am grateful and I feel like we have the best deal that we can have under the circumstances. So thank you.
Thanks, Eliza.
Thank you.
Okay. Joe, having just talked and talked, do, would you like to read the resolution, to, to make the motion on the resolution? Or are you talking at the moment?
I'm, I have a sore throat, so if you could have somebody else read it, that would be helpful.
All right. And we, we discussed that the reference needs to be made to the addendum. I believe that the place that that appropriately lands is in the second hereby defined in the contract and addendum. I will read it all into the record, but I'm just asking you before I start out, that seems like the appropriate place for it to land. Do you agree?
Uh, yes, we don't have to do the addendum tonight if everyone would rather just digest it. Yes, we don't have to do the addendum tonight if everyone would rather just digest it a little further. It's really kind of just some corrections, but that's entirely up to the board.
Do people feel, do board members feel comfortable making a resolution that includes reference to the addendum? I do.
I do.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will make the motion. The following resolution is offered by Mayor Foley for adoption and seconded by?
I'll second it.
Trustee Fatty. Whereas the Village of Cold Spring Highway Department currently collects garbage, recycling, brush and bulk items throughout the village. And whereas the village has explored outsourcing garbage and refuse collection on multiple occasions in the past, but had deemed the venture to be financially impractical. And whereas due to the rising costs of vehicle maintenance, labor, garbage disposal and the cost to purchase a new garbage truck, the village revisited outsourcing refuse and recycling collection. And whereas on November 5th, 2021, the village solicited bids for refuse and recycling collection. And whereas three bids were received with Royal Service Company submitting the lowest bid. Hereafter referred to, no, I will simply say Royal. It is hereby resolved that the village awards the bid for the refuse and recycling collection to Royal at an annual cost of $190,119 for year one plus $2,500 for performance bond with options for the village to renew the agreement and subsequent years at a rate as per the agreement. This cost is inclusive of all parcels that currently have refuse and recycling collected by the village represented in Exhibits A and B of the bid. And 195 gallon garbage bin and 165 gallon recycling bin per parcel identified in Exhibit A and dumpsters identified in Exhibit B. And it is hereby further resolved that the following additional services will be provided to the village at a cost and frequency as defined in the contract and addendum. Public refuse and recycling containers, see Exhibit C and D, brush pickup, bulk pickup, Christmas tree pickup. And it is hereby further resolved that additional parcels can be added per the terms of the contract. Those additional parcels will each receive 195 gallon refuse bin and 165 gallon recycling bin. And it is hereby further resolved that existing parcels can add additional bins or dumpsters at the rates as per the terms of the contract. It is hereby finally resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Gold Spring authorizes the mayor to sign the contract with Royal Carding Services Company, subject to final review and comments by the village attorney. And this is a roll call vote.
Pastor Gertl?
Hi.
Trustee Fatty?
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck?
Hi.
Trustee Woods?
Hi.
And Mayor Foley?
I enthusiastically vote aye. Thank you so much.
Officially adopted on this date by a vote of 5-0.
Excellent, most excellent. Well done.
Thank you for all that work, Joe.
Yes, indeed.
Good job, Joe.
Now, thank you, guys. And also just a quick shout out, the the Mirandi administration got this thing started and we just kind of finished it off. So we have to give them some credit.
Absolutely, indeed. Thank you today.
Good work, Joe. Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing. Over the last couple of weeks, we met and interviewed candidates for police officer in the Village of Cold Spring. Just so that the public is is aware, we have a part time team in the village and shifts are there are a number of shifts per month that are divided among those part time officers. With we've had a number of folks come on board early in their career and take full time opportunities in other departments. We've had others go out on injury and we need some some additional officers to help fill the shifts, particularly as we head into, well, we all hope that we're heading into spring and and heavy visitor season. So Officer in Charge Larry Burke has recommended the hiring of three of the officers that we interviewed. Craig Davenport, who will come to us from the town of Newcastle where he is retiring. Robert Barclay, who is retiring from the NYPD. Mike Christensen from the city of Mount Vernon. I will say that I was so impressed with all three of these gentlemen. I'm particularly impressed with their approach to community policing. And I'm looking forward to them being out among our our residents and visitors meeting and and helping us move traffic safely and 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 keep to keep the village sounding well. So I make the motion to hire Mr. Davenport, Officer Davenport, Officer Barclay and Officer Christensen. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item is cleanup. I think at this point, everyone knows that the village teams were hit really hard with COVID and lots of folks had to pick up and and do beyond what was normally asked of them. And in recognition of Corey Thomas, who while the while our highway supervisor was out sick, took on the administrative and management responsibilities of the department. I would like to move to recognize the period from December 10th to December 20th when Corey was our acting highway crew chief with an increase of $2 per hour for the hours he worked in that period.
Second that.
Thank you, Catherine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, Corey. All the guys have stepped up. Corey is super stepped up. Okay, um, while we're all here, is there any additional comment from the public tonight? So great to see so many people out. Any hands raised, Jeff?
Nope.
Okay, let someone make a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks a lot, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Feel better, you guys.
Thank you.